Good afternoon, welcome to the September 7, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. We have a regular agenda today and going down a regular agenda, Jerry, do you mind doing the roll call?
Chairman Gears?
Here.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Chris Brown?
Here.
John Brown?
Here.
All here, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Jerry. Underneath old business, we have no old business. We do have two items underneath new business. Oh, yeah, we did take that. Did we, and I have a motion to approve the July 6 meeting.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, if not, do you mind calling the roll, please?
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Chris Brown?
Yes.
Chairman Gears?
Yes.
John Brown?
Yes.
All right, underneath new business, we have two items. First one is a Watson Way Trail representing for our review and approval of site plan impacting approximately 2.0031 acres within the brownies of the city of Norwood. And I know we have a representative from Cincinnati Representatives, just if they could give us an explanation on what it is and what it isn't, and for any of the residents that would happen to tune on cable later on down the road. That's okay. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mel McVeigh with the City of Cincinnati Department of Transportation. As you know, we've been working for the last several months to purchase about 4.1 miles of rail corridor from the Norfolk Southern Railway. We anticipate closing on that purchase next Tuesday. And as part of that purchase, there are three new parcels and legal descriptions being created, which include portions of both the City of Cincinnati and the City of Norwood. And so we're here today to ask for your approval of those new legal descriptions. A quick update on the project, we have received some state funding to construct Phase 1 of the trail, which will go from I-71 East to Madison Road, and we expect to construct that next summer. And I was notified yesterday that we've also been shortlisted for federal funding to begin Phase 2 of the trail, which will go from I-71 West to Elsmere or Floral, and will touch the city of Norwood. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah. I was just, on Phase 1, just bear with me, is 71 to...
71 East to Madison Road. So it'll run behind Withrow High School and connect to the Rookwood Shopping Center.
All right, and Phase 2?
Phase 2, we're actually going to call it Phase 2A because we couldn't quite get enough money to go all the way to Montgomery Road. So it'll go from I-71 West to about Elsmere or Floral as far as we can go, and then we'll continue looking. It's getting across the I-71 Bridge is incredibly expensive. But I think once we get that part completed, the rest of the funding will go much farther towards Montgomery Road. And I think the, I haven't received the official grant award yet, but I believe that money would come into play in 2018. And that would be construction funding.
That's what I was asked for clarification because I heard the two phases and I had nothing, I heard nothing about going any further than Montgomery Road, so.
Yes, our intention is to go all the way to Montgomery Road, but getting across I-71 took up a huge chunk of the grant money.
I bet, I bet.
So you're going to, you're going to come up to 71 and stop? Is that the idea?
Just on the other side of 71. The grant requires you to take it to a city street so that residents can access that trail. And so Elsmere Floral, sort of that area, was the closest city street that I could get to.
Bear with me, I'm old. But if you're not going to cross 71, you can't get to Elsmere Floral.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We'll start on the east side of 71, and then go over the bridge to Elsmere Floral.
That's Phase 2.
That's Phase 2.
Like I said, so you're, for Phase 1, you're going to go up to 71 and stop. You're not going to go over the bridge to Elsmere Floral?
Correct, that would be Phase 2.
Okay, so, so if you go up to 71, what street is close over there that people can access to?
There's a little neighborhood street called Tamarack Avenue. It connects off of Dana Avenue. There might be one more street in between, but that was the closest neighborhood street east of 71.
So we're behind Withrow High School, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, sort of behind Withrow and a little bit west.
So then, won't he come into Norwood for the time being?
Phase 1 will not. Phase 2 will be the next piece.
And Phase 2 will be when? I've heard of Phase 2s before, and Phase 2s a lot of times don't even happen, but...
Well, the grant money that we were told yesterday that we will be awarded, I believe, will be issued in 2018. It's OKI money, and it's usually two or three years out when you apply for it.
Actually, a portion of Phase 1 will be in Norwood, right there along the Rookwood Shopping Center, because I believe Phase 1 is going to be between Tamarack and Madison Road. So that, there's a sizable parcel of land by the Grovedale Place that's in Norwood that abuts the Rookwood Shopping Center.
Yeah, but the railroad is the actual corp line, right?
According to this map, there is a dog leg right there around Grovedale, where portions of the railroad are in Norwood and portions are in the city of Cincinnati.
So there are the three parcels that are actually being created that are both partially in the City of Cincinnati and the City of Norwood. One of them is the piece from Madison all the way west. And that is, so that's, that is partially in the city of Norwood.
When you purchase all the property, next week, does that purchase, are you purchasing a right-of-way all the way up to Montgomery Road?
Yes, the 4.1 miles will extend from Montgomery Road to Booster Pike.
So City of Cincinnati won't at that? Okay, all right.
So, let me get this, it says Norfolk Southern will create and transfer ownership of the following three parcels, partially located in the city of Norwood. So the parcels that are partially in Norwood, including behind Rookwood, will be transferred to the city of Cincinnati.
That's right, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. I'm Andrea Yam with the City of Cincinnati Law Department. So there's a colored sort of line map, and on there are three, yeah, exactly that one. There are three sort of ovals drawn on there, and those are the locations of the, I'm just sorry, Mr. Brown, it's the one, it's the one right before that, that shows the three parcels that are being, that are in the, in both the City of Cincinnati and the City of Norwood. There's actually one that is abutting also, but it doesn't have any piece in the city of Norwood.
Just for, am I correct in reading this map that the solid line is your parcel that you're creating, whereas the highlighted line is the corp line? So wherever there is land north of this line, this yellow line in the solid area, that would be in the city of Norwood that you're buying?
That's right, that's right. So there are some more detail, unfortunately, I didn't bring enough copies, but there are some more detailed drawings of, and I think the corporation line is shown in green for each of the three parcels there.
And then the purchase of the railroad right-of-way does not include the nine acre yards, correct? That's still going to be owned by Norfolk Southern?
Yes.
That's right.
And you know, we talked about that in some of the other meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll still be available. So basically, you're going to own the property or the right-of-way, but it's still in the corporation of Norwood and Cincinnati?
That's right.
Okay.
There's no jurisdictional change, it's just legal ownership.
Right.
Well, maybe Mr. Gary might be able to answer this, or one of you two. Will any of this affect the, the property tax money that will be coming in from different entities that you're purchasing the property from?
So my understanding is, is that Norfolk Southern is not paying property tax on this. It's not sure.
I'm not sure.
It's not, so we saw the settlement statement, there was no proportion of taxes on there. And we have a, you know, we have Riverman Title Company that's working on that, so I believe that they, they would have checked that.
And as the project develops, you will have your consultant appear before the city to explain exactly what you'll be doing within our boundaries as part of the overall Watson Way project, and hosting public hearings and allow people to provide input where, about access points and design of the trail, et cetera.
Who would have jurisdiction as far as emergency services? Are we making runs on there, or Cincinnati?
That's my question, exactly. Exactly my question.
That is a good question. I'm not sure that we, we can check, we can get you the answer to that. I mean, would you?
I assume that if it's in Norwood, Norwood responds, and if it's in Cincinnati, Cincinnati responds.
But if we don't own the property, it's just like Linder Park. We own the property, but it's in the city of Cincinnati.
Right, and they respond.
And they respond, yes.
So if Norwood, if it's in, if it's within the corporation limits, I think that Norwood responds. They're not, they're not changing the corporation law.
It's just the owner.
Yeah.
So as part of any Watson Way development, that probably should be ironed out because this is a trail that's going to be accessing multiple jurisdictions.
And it should be properly marked, because I guarantee you, somebody will want to take credit for one thing, and if there's something bad, the other city's not, hey, it didn't happen in Cincinnati. I've been down that road, so, and I've been down the road with Norwood, saying, whoa, we don't know anything about it.
Well, will the trail be designed so that if it has to be accessed by the city of Cincinnati, will it be able to have their equipment go down the line for wrecks or medical emergencies more than anything?
Yes, there should be multiple access points that would make it convenient for emergency vehicles. And this recently, this issue recently came up with our Lunkin Trail that goes around the airport, that people would call 911, and the first responders would have no idea where you were on the trail. And so just recently, we started developing a system of mile markers, pavement markers to put on the trail, so that when people are on the trail and injure themselves and they call 911, they can say, I am at, you know, ORT 5-1, and the first responders have a map and know how to get there. So I assume that we will eventually develop something similar for Watson, so that if, if something should happen, people would be able to find the nearest mile marker and be able to call appropriately.
And it will depend on what, if they use the cellphone, which tower pings that call to where, what 911 center will go to. That tower could ping it to Cincinnati, or it could ping it to Norwood. It just varies, you know, on a day-by-day basis. But these are all things that I guarantee you should be straightened out and ironed out prior to it, because what will happen, as sure as I'm sitting here, if something's going to go wrong, everybody's going to say, I don't know where it's at, I don't know whose jurisdiction it is. But that should be all worked out, ironed clear, in the event that something would happen, that the city of Cincinnati and the city of Norwood don't look like a combination of fools that can't find somebody that's hurt. So that's all one of the things that should be ironed out between Safety Department, Law Departments, and the city prior to anything going wrong.
As I've said in other meetings, I applaud the City of Cincinnati on being able to get the Norfolk Southern to be able to sell the right-of-way or sell the property. I'm impressed with that one. They move pretty slow, and you got them pretty fast, so that's good.
Probably because Cincinnati owns their own railroad, too.
Yeah, that's true.
Might have been a little, little exchange of friendship there, too, so, which is fine. That's the way business should work. If Norfolk Southern runs over your rail line, it makes it easier for them to deal with you if you say, no, you're not running over my rail line, so. As a law director, you wouldn't say that, but I'm sure.
Couldn't say.
Disgust.
Very good. Any other questions? Comments? Do I hear a motion to approve the plans we have in front of us for them, so they can go ahead and start purchasing?
So I'll move.
I'll move, I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
I want to thank you two very much for showing up and putting up with us for this short time. I deeply appreciate, like Mr. Gears said, I deeply appreciate the City of Cincinnati and all your efforts to make this move forward, because when you're dealing with a railroad, you've done an outstanding job.
Just, um, do you know estimated how long it would take for you to complete the entire length of the trail from Montgomery to the Fairfax area?
We don't, because it's all funding dependent. For the time being, we only have enough money to design and construct Phase 1, and hypothetically, in early October, I'll know if we have officially the funding to begin Phase 2. But beyond that, it's just, it'll be every opportunity we have to apply for grant funding, we'll just keep plugging away at it, and hopefully, every year, we'll get, you know, another piece, so inch by inch.
Are you designing the entire right-of-way, or are you just going to do the segments?
We, we're doing what we're calling a corridor analysis first, which is sort of a high-level look at the whole 4.1 miles to determine things like access points, trailheads, special areas where we might want to do something interesting. And then, once that's complete, we're going to delve into the detailed design on a phase-by-phase basis as the money's available. But we are doing sort of that corridor analysis first to make sure we take into account everything that might happen throughout the entire four miles.
Are you doing, as part of that corridor analysis, a uniform set of standards for signage, lighting?
Correct.
Street furniture, all that?
Right, and just that even the design of the trail, what that would look like, in terms of, will it be, you know, will there be a separated lane for joggers, or people on bikes, or will it just be one piece, or all of that will sort of need to be determined upfront, so that we know as we go along how it's going to look.
Couple more questions, I'm sorry for the delay, but I'm sure the people that are, where this trail terminates at this time, I'm sure the residents over there will be aware that traffic around their house will be picking up if it terminates there.
Yes, we've been working very closely with the Watson Way nonprofit organization, and they have been doing great outreach in terms of literally going door-to-door and doing door hangers and flyers, keeping people up to date on the progress of the trail. Or for example, I expect that we will have a public meeting probably in early November to talk about the first phase of the trail, and I know for that, they'll go door-to-door along all of the abutting properties and door-knock all of them to make sure that folks are aware.
And about lighting?
At this time, we don't think that we will have the funding to do lighting. We haven't lit any of our other city trails, just as a matter of funding. Occasionally, ODOT will require us to do one or two lights. For example, on the Little Miami Scenic Trail, we need to go through a tunnel, and they'll require that that be lit for safety reasons. But generally speaking, trail areas that are in sort of open areas, there's no lighting requirement, and we haven't been able to find a sustainable source of funding for it. I know that the Watson Way nonprofit very strongly desires that the trail be lit, and so we've asked them to go and do what they can in terms of fundraising to help with things like that, so I know they're working on it.
You mentioned three designated or identified parking areas that you anticipate trail users primarily using. Where are those?
I think we're still working through that. Again, that's one of the tasks that the Watson Way nonprofit has been working on, sort of reaching out to property owners and figuring out who would be amenable to that, because we have heard from several neighborhoods, some people do want trail access from their street, and other people do not. The parking is already tight, full, they don't want to have people coming on their street and trying to park. So we're, the consultants are sorting through all of that now and going through the corridor as part of the analysis and looking to see, you know, Alt Park is an obvious location, there's plenty of parking there. We're reaching out to Rookwood to see how they would feel about it. Withrow High School, a couple of different businesses along the route, but it's all still in flux somewhat.
So people don't want people driving their cars so they can ride their bikes? Makes sense.
Just one, one last question for myself. And I know we'll be asked somewhere down the road, but, I mean, kind of right now, like other sections that goes past, actually, even that, I mean, they're basically abandoned rail lines even though they are owned. And in order to, if you're looking at 2018 for Phase 2, or Phase 2A, and beyond that for Phase 2B, Montgomery Road, do you have any kind of plans just to do any kind of maintenance? And I don't mean the rail tracks, but overgrowth, the weeds and trees, because I mean, in some cases, I know some of the residents behind Floral Avenue were trapped up in Phase 2, but I mean, it's just a jungle out there.
When we put together our initial budget for Cincinnati City Council, that was something that we did include funding for, for the next several years, assuming that that would need to happen. I'm also speaking with the Watson Way nonprofit to see how they might be able to help in terms of volunteer labor, but we are well aware that that is an issue that will very likely come up very soon.
Yeah, because I mean, I think everyone's aware, again, you know, you, even in our case, we had part of the lines that come through the city, and in order for us to, for noxious weeds or whatever, I mean, you have to go down to Florida to basically get them to bring it back up here to go to court to cite them, but, and I just, you know, I'm glad to hear that, that it would be, that would be included to maintain it, because they're going to say, well, we now have new owners, and since we've got new owners, we're just going to say, call the city. No, but, no, but, I mean, that way we can avoid any kind of, you know, questions like that or trouble.
Great. So as part of the sale, the Norfolk Southern Railroad is keeping their tracks and other railroads facilities, so they're going to be removing them, they're supposed to remove them within the next three months.
Okay.
So I don't, I think that they're going to sort of put it, grade it to a, you know, they're not cleaning it up, but...
Are they removing the warehouse that's down there at the yards? That's part of the residual parcel, are they going to keep that as well? Or can they, can you ask them to remove that?
Yes, I think the, I think the language is something like railroad facility, so we'll see what that ends up meaning.
I mean, at that point, once the track's gone, it's not going to serve your purpose because they can't get to the rails anyway. Theoretically.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Once again, thank you so much.
Can I ask one procedural question?
Sure.
Is the commission authorizing the chairman to sign a plaque approving this, this plan?
I would include it, I'll include it in my motion.
Great.
That way they can move forward.
I think what we need for the Hamilton County engineer is the legal descriptions that will go with the deed, be stamped.
Okay. I mean, it's, I think it's contemplated by 7/11/09 of the revised code.
That's a good question, whatever, whatever we need to move it forward, I mean, I'll just include that in my motion.
Great, thank you.
If you, between you and the law department can handle it, I'll sign whatever we need to.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, concerns? Not, do you mind calling the roll, Jerry?
Chairman Gears?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
John Brown?
Yes.
Chris Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, second on the, the agenda, underneath new business, we have Norwood City Council requesting the Planning Commission review Resolution Number 9 proposing changes to the zoning code text with regards to prohibiting play structures in the front yard and declaring an emergency. Did everyone get the opportunity to reel it over? Well, I do, I do have a few questions, but...
I have a few also.
I have some concerns and questions as well.
Okay, well, very, okay. Well, and Jerry, we'll put you on the spot, because I know Marilyn, who sponsored it, she's down in Hamilton County at the emergency meeting, because she asked us to be there, and it was from 2:00 to 4:00, so that's why I said, she asked if we were coming, I said, no, we're going to be here. But with that being said, and just reading over this stuff, Jerry, just for clarification, with this, and really, my question is, what is considered a front yard when you live on a corner?
What is considered pro-zoning is, you have two front yards, what some people perceive as a side yard is actually a front yard pro-zoning. So you have two front yards, for example, say you have a house on the corner, I'm trying to think, maybe Floral and Smith. So you'd have a, yeah, you'd have a front yard on Smith and a front yard on Floral. And if the house faced, faced Smith, most people would think their side yard would be on Floral, or vice versa, you know? We don't have a lot of issues, I know this came up because we had a playground, playground equipment, some expensive playground equipment installed in what was perceived as a side yard. We don't regulate playground equipment, we've never had really an issue on these type of things, they're very rare.
Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, wouldn't the playground equipment that's currently at Sharpsburg and Williams also run afoul of the proposed changes?
Sure.
Oh, whoa, 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 whoa. Oh, no way. So in other words, if we do this, we're going to tell Sharpsburg, Norwood Public Schools, take that down?
You, you really can't, but if they were to replace it, they would have to be in compliance with...
But do they have the option to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to appeal or not?
They always have the option, but does the Board, will the Board be able to make a decision to grant a variance? Because the language is pretty clear, thou shall not have a playground in the front yard. And there's really, I don't know of a practical difficulty that would exist other than we would like to have a playground in our front yard. And I think you touched on something very important, because there are numerous lots that are not only corner lots, but are through lots. I'm thinking of Norwood and Harris, and there's one on Maple and Ridgeway that have...
There's a bunch of them.
There's a bunch of them. So basically, what innocence would happen is, by adopting this language, we would be severely limiting the placement of children's playground, children's play areas in the city. And I understand the reasoning behind it because of the issue on Floral, but I don't know if this has gone over and above what is necessary to sort of address that concern.
So in other words, like you were talking about a corner, basically, you have two front yards, okay? I know of at least one house on, the address is on Harris. Garage comes in off of Norwood. Is the back of the house the front yard also? And I believe the mayor knows which house I'm talking about.
Yeah, I can't visualize it, John, but...
Wouldn't that be determined more by the, by the address of the house? If it's 2701 Norwood Avenue, then that would be the front yard, I mean...
Well, according to the zoning code, as Jerry pointed out, it's, that's not how they view it, they view it as basically whatever yards on a street.
Right. Basically, if I wanted to put a playground, piece of equipment in my backyard, which is really my front yard, I'd be illegal.
You know, it's, these, these issues here, you know, we're trying to fix, apply something that is very rare, happening in the city, I mean, it doesn't usually happen that often. I try to think of, like a kiddie pool, you have a mother out there with her, their, their new child, maybe a year old, and they'll have a kiddie pool that they'll put out there in the front yard to watch the baby while she's out there. You know, do we want to not allow that now? I mean, you run to a variety of things that really are not intrusive.
I mean, any, in the new, it's add new section, it basically states what... I mean, any, in the new, it's add new section, it basically states what will not, what is considered a play structure. So...
Well, when they say recreation, they put in there similar recreational equipment leaves a lot up into interpretation. I really don't think that language is very good to have in there like that.
And also, what about, I know the house in question on Floral, it's on everyone's mind, is that grandfathered in?
It's Forest Avenue.
Yes.
Or Forest, I'm sorry.
Yes, it would be, John. Yes. This would not affect that. Even if it was passed, it wouldn't affect it.
I keep getting flashbacks of chickens and driveways. I mean, we, sometimes we, this legislative body takes on issues that, and we spin our wheels and spin our wheels for weeks. And, I, you know, I don't know. I mean, I wish individuals who wanted this were here to give their side. I feel, you know, I would, maybe there's some issues that we're missing that, you know, that the individuals who would like to see this passed would be here and given an opportunity to say, you know, what? I mean...
Well, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, there, there's other things that, you know, some people have a big side, you know, their front yard's on a corner lot and they have a big side yard and, you know, some people put, you know, horseshoes out there and not play horseshoes. So, that would be prohibited under this also because that's recreational equipment. So you know you're going as far as saying, well, somebody's got a horseshoe pit out there, they, you know, they want to have horseshoes for the summertime and then they take them in, they wouldn't be allowed to do that either.
Well, really, couldn't he put a storage shed back there?
No.
According to this, because it says storage areas.
No. And if you have recreational equipment, you know how young children are in the summertime where you, you may want to have a little camp out and they have a little, you have a, I call them a pup tent, you know, the kind you used to put in there and get to sleep out over the weekend or sleep out at night and have a couple of their friends over. That would not be allowed under this.
I think that there are a lot of overall concerns about the appearance of our residential areas and I am always interested in making sure that our residential areas really do meet our standards and expectations because Norwood is becoming an up and coming place. We have a lot of people moving in, buying houses for more than I would have ever thought they would sell for. And I think that in the future, what we're really going to run into is not so much these playground issues, it's going to be tear downs. I have a feeling that we're going to be in a situation very similar to Montgomery and Madera where we have builders wanting to come in and build in Norwood and the question becomes, what do we want them to build? I mean, I have a site plan here from 4304 Ashland. It's a vacant lot. Somebody has come and proposed to build on it. I look out over on that lot and quite frankly, based on the site plan, I don't like what they're proposing because I'm going to be looking at a garage instead of a nice Victorian or a nice new home. So from my standpoint, I would ask council if we could start studying or at least implementing some design guidelines now for our residential areas. Very modest like we have done for our commercial, basically telling builders, here's our expectation, where we would like them to place the garage, how we would like the housing to look so that when we do get a situation where we see more and more of these tear downs, we're ready for them instead of having 20 or so odd neighbors coming up in front of the BZ or the Planning Commission saying, "Why aren't you doing anything about it?" That's what I would ask the council to look into and I know we have some very talented staff that can put together some relatively easy design guidelines relatively soon to address this concern. And maybe as part of that, include some very specific parameters as to playground equipment. Maybe it is not appropriate to have a playground equipment right in the front yard, a big swing set or a trampoline.
As long as you don't live on a corner lot.
Well, and that's the thing, that's the thing. As long as you don't live on a corner lot. What are we, what are we, what are we trying to prevent? Is it forest, which technically is a side yard because that house has actually got a Washington or a, one of those side street, Jefferson address? Or are we want to get so into the minutia where we are prohibiting basically anybody on a corner lot from having playground equipment for their grandkids or their children?
Well, there's a couple of issues. I wish people inside the city that lived here had as much faith in the city as people outside of the city. Because our real estate values are just skyrocketing up and John can testify that. And it's moving really quick. So, you know, and the other issue is, is that sometimes if you put a play set in your yard and you ignore it and you let the weeds grow up and you don't maintain that piece of equipment, I don't care what, whether you permit it or not, it's going to look bad and somebody's going to see something bad. So, that's part of the issue too. So, like I said, I wish somebody was here that was in favor of this, that could address the issues because if we, if we deny it, and I'm not putting it off, but if we deny it and I'm tending to move in that direction and they say, "Well, we just didn't have an opportunity" because they was fulfilling some of their edificity roles by, you know, by attending a meeting that, you know, that's of some importance. So I don't know the best way to approach it, to be honest with you. Rather than pass it off and say, "We're going to go for 30 days,"
We could always table it. I mean, I think you bring up a good point, especially from the, what we've experienced this past week. Not only did we go through something that was traumatic and tragic, but I think it really showed how impressive as a community we can be and how people should really recognize what a good thing we have here in Norwood. And more importantly, we should expect and demand that people coming in know what our expectations are, build to those expectations. And that can include playground equipment certainly, but I think more importantly, the issue's going to be garages. Because I know myself, I would hate to see homes being torn down and replaced with just garages and just have, I mean, the site plan that's being shown, it's a 23-foot garage on a 50-foot lot with 12 feet door area. So basically, as you drive down Ashland, you're going to see all these beautiful Victorians and newly renovated homes and people moving in, paying the $300,000, paying the $200,000 for these homes. And then low and behold, there's going to be this one garage sticking out like a sore thumb. Now is the time for us to address that concern so that in the future, we don't have to answer to a crowd of angry people saying, "Why aren't you doing anything about it?"
I think, I think we need more clarification as far as, I don't know if it'd be from the building department or the council or whoever proposed, I think proposed it, but what is a structure? I mean, if, say, someone puts a swing set out there during the day, a little kid's swing set for him to play with, are we going to send a police officer down to cite him? Yeah. And, how about a porch swing? That's in the front, that's in the front yard.
Right. I agree with you.
That's a porch swing. Yep.
Is it got to be permanently affixed or what?
Well, remember God love them, the friendly little Xavier students? God love them, they had this big thing tied up in a tree and they were swinging 80 feet in the air in front of traffic. I mean, those idiots, you know, with a beer bottle in their hands. So, I mean, that, that's a swing, you know, but...
It would prevent beer pong tables.
They're future leaders.
And if the mayor and his wife want to sit on the front porch and swing and hold hands, we go up and cite them?
Boy, that'd be, no, I'm not, no.
I would let the police department handle that portion of it.
That's just, that's just something I think we need some clarification on.
Why don't we, why don't, I'll move that we delay it and let the people who are in favor of it have an opportunity to address the issue. And maybe if we report back to council, we could get some feedback then. And I would not be opposed to saying, "Okay." Well, then somebody says, "Well, you'll put it out for 30 days because that's only your need." I would not be opposed to saying, "Okay, in a couple of weeks." Instead of waiting a month, we come back in a couple of weeks. And rather than make them wait a month and let them have their say, I'd make them wait a month. So, so with that, I'll move that we postpone it, report it to council and then if the, the proponents of this would like to us to schedule an earlier meeting, that, you know, that members be contacted and come to an agreeable early date.
I'll second that.
All right. I was just going to add on that. Do you think would be to our best interest to, Jerry, you've got enough information, we can send them a letter and let them know what our questions, concerns along with Chris and that, and how it affects?
Yes. And what I would do is before I send it to city council, I'll run it by you to make sure we've captured everything that we're talking about today.
That way it gives them an explanation of why versus just having them hear, well, they said, "No, we're going to just put it on hold." So, all right. Any other comments or concerns? Do you mind calling a roll for that, Jerry? Please.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Chairman, Chairman Gears?
Yes.
Chris Brown?
Yes.
John Brown?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Jerry. The, moving down the agenda, we have communications and miscellaneous, we have nothing, we don't have any absent members. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one item.
Who?
This is that, it was a request from the Housing Health Recreation from Marilyn Hanrahan, who's the chairman, and she just requested a, the current policies and procedures for the Planning Commission. And I do have a copy here and they were wanting to return, they want us to return that to the clerk of council's office. I just wanted to make sure I can go ahead and forward that. I've got it here for them.
Yeah. Okay.
Before we adjourn, Jerry, do you know where we stand on the signed code updates? If those have been considered...
I have not reviewed it yet.
Okay.
So, my concern on adding anything additional to the zoning code at this point, we have not codified anything from the last five years into that zoning code. So, I would be hesitant to continue to adopt different ordinances and changes to that zoning code until we codify what we've already have because it's very difficult for our staff to keep thumbing through old ordinances and trying to find what's currently applied versus what we actually have on the books.
And have you spoken about getting those codifications? You know what the status is on those?
I do not.
Okay.
I do not. That's not a function out of our department. I can tell you that.
Sure. And, so, waiting basically on the codification of the previous to update the signed code, which is part of the building code?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's part of the building code, it's not part of the zoning code, but we've adopted so many different ordinances in the last probably five years, Chris. You know, in regards to areas that we have PUDs now, areas where we talk about, oh, the overlay district or the, what we call in the Montgomery corridor regulations, marking regulations.
Right.
Those have been passed, but they haven't been codified into the code.
Correct. Okay. I'm just curious, I just...
I would think, if I remember right, I think Greg has a draft ready?
Yeah, there's a draft ready and I think that it's almost ready to be reviewed by Planning Commission, at least start the process.
Okay.
So at least we can sign off on them and if, hopefully by that time, the codification can be put in place.
Yeah, if it's ready.
Yeah.
Let's contact Greg and see where we're at.
Sure.
We get copies out so we can, in all our spare time, start reading it out.
Right.
Any other questions? Anything else needs to come up? We have a motion on the floor to adjourn. Do you mind calling a roll, Jerry, please?
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Gears?
Yes.
John Brown?
Yes.
Chris Brown?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, it's all.